All council members are present. There's a, the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room up there on the wall and is accessible to the members of the public. Consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on August 7th, 2023, as on file with the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's reported claims in amount of $1,803,967.74. Approval of Boswell reported claims in the amount of $84,087.24. Approval write-off of ambulance bad debts. Approval of pay request number two in the amount of $39,297.56 to Philip Krikowski Construction and Trenching Incorporated for Water Systems Improvement, electric upgrade project as part of the 2021 Water SRF projects as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of change order number two, increase in the amount of $4,087.53, and the final pay request to Pavers Incorporated in the amount of $131,087.19 for the Mill and Overlay 2022 project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Award of contract to Lotman Excavating in the amount of $31,429.22 for the Standing Bear Trail Parking Lot Stormwater Detention Cell Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of change order number one, increase in the amount of $12,461.90, and pay request number one in the amount of $84,035.75 to Lotman Carpenter Construction for the East Court Street, 24th to 26th, Street Hike Bike Trail Construction 2023. Resolution number 7108, executing the municipal annual certificate of program compliance form for the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, Classifications and Standards. Item M, resolution number 7109, adopting the updated training policy regulating city employees' requests to participate and/or be reimbursed for any training or continuing education conferences, seminars, or meetings. And number N, resolution number 7110, adopting the revised continuing education assistance policy. Any item a council member wants pulled off? Mr. Kerr?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
E and N.
Which one?
E and N.
Anything else? Mr. McLean?
I move that items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of items K, E, and N be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And those passed eight to zero. Okay. Mr. McLean, item E.
I move that item E listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Mr. Doyle?
I'm not really against this, and I'm sorry I didn't get this asked this afternoon, but we have Schwarzkopf's money in there that we're buying the ground with. We're paying for that with LBA 40 money bonds, right?
Yep.
Can you tell me what happens now? Because that, I presume, is taken out of cash here.
So you, we issued the bonds about a month ago. We have the cash already in our pocket.
Okay, it's all done.
It's already done. So we issued a check off to Schwarzkopf.
Yep. Done. Okay, I understand.
Any other discussion? Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero.
Do you want to tell the public where that is?
The Schwarzkopf ground, the Schwarzkopf ground is the ground that's in the industrial park. It is the piece of ground that would be west of precise fab. It would be north of the biodiesel plant. You keep going north up there, so north of Sergeant Street.
It's the latest acquisition to continue the industrial park.
Correct.
Because people do watch this, so.
All right. Mr. McLean, item K.
I move that items listed, item K be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Okay.
The only reason I pulled it off is that's an awful large amount for a change order. You know me with change orders. I'd just like to know why there was a $12,000 discrepancy over the bid.
There was not a discrepancy in the bid. What we bid out on that particular project was the trail extension along Highway 136 from 24th to 26th. When we had a contractor onboard, we then change ordered in some other work. Those would be panels in Hannibal Park that were broken along the trail, and so that was the additional work that was done.
And the piece on Elk.
Yes, and the piece on Elk Street as well. But those were the items that were changed. So it was additional work added to the contractor.
Okay. No other discussion. Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. Okay, Mr. McLean, item N.
I move that item N listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Maybe everybody else understands that, but can we expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So item in on the continuing education policy, so the state statute has allowed firefighter, or excuse me, police officers to get reimbursed if they took certain classes. They recently changed it and allowed firefighters to get added to get reimbursement as well. And so what we put in the policy is that if they are eligible for that particular funding from the state, they have to apply for it. If they do receive it, then they have to reimburse the city for whatever money they receive. So the city's not paying for the class.
Yep.
And then that employee's also getting paid by the state of Nebraska.
Got it. Okay. I'm good with that. Yep, thanks.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Okay, move on to public hearings. First public hearing is for the purpose of considering an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, NDED, for the Land and Water Conservation Fund with the objective of revitalizing Saratoga Astro Park.
Kelly, you want to come up and talk?
Sure.
Kelly's with SEND, and SEND's been helping us on this grant and a few other ones, and so.
Yes.
We'll give Kelly an opportunity to introduce herself and tell you what she's applying for here.
Absolutely. My name is Kelly Guntrip. I'm the Director of Development Services for Southeast Nebraska Development District. We are currently writing two applications on behalf of the City of Beatrice. One is actually clarification to the Nebraska Gayman Parks for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. This is for updated playground equipment for Astro Park, new sidewalk that will encircle the playground area. Both of these updates will greatly improve accessibility and ADA compliance. The total project cost is estimated at just under $165,000. There is a 50% match to that, and that is cash on hand, so that's about $82,484. So the application itself is due September 4th. The city can enter into a fee-for-service contract with SEND to administer the grant should it be awarded. Does anybody have any questions?
Gentlemen.
Toby?
Yes.
Don't we have some money put back for Astro Playground in our new budget?
We have it budgeted for this upcoming year, yes.
Okay.
In anticipation that Kelly is going to.
If we get this grant, then we'll carry it down a bit.
Correct.
Good. Because that does need cleaned up. It's a mess up there. Old, old. That new splash pad, we need, we need, we haven't replaced any playground equipment about, what, three, four years?
It's been a little while since we've replaced some playground equipment. And we've done the Land Water Conservation Fund before. It's gone well for us, so we're hopeful that we get this grant and make this improvement.
Absolutely.
Anyone from the public? Let's move to close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:09 PM.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Okay, next public hearing for the purpose of consideration and application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for the Community Development Block Grant to aid in the elimination, elimination of substandard and blighted conditions within the downtown area identified in the city's 2016 Downtown Revitalization Project.
I will stay put.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So this is a continuation. I believe this is Phase Three implementation for the downtown revitalization. The last application was submitted in 2021. That was approved for $400,000 plus $100,000 match from the business owners. I believe it is picking up, just conversation that I've had with Tobias and Tom. But, you know, there's always a need within our downtowns to continue to carry these programs forward. So this application is for a Phase Four, Phase Three implementation, so another $400,000 grant plus $35,000 for general administration and construction management to be matched by $100,000 for the business owners. This application is due September 15th to the Department of Economic Development, and again, should it be awarded, the City of Beatrice would, or can contract with SEND to administer the project. And we strongly encourage if there's any business owners in, at the meeting tonight to submit a pre-application if they're in the downtown, or to write a letter of support, or to come up and show support of the program, because that is very vital for this application.
So what's the scope of projects that'll be allowed in this grant, then?
So the, so the Department of Economic Development is becoming a lot more clear on what is eligible and ineligible with downtown revitalization. So what is ineligible is second-story residential. Demolition is also, they're getting more strict on what is classified as code enforcement. So if you do have businesses within the downtown that are against your ordinance when it comes to codes, they want to make sure that all of the business owners, the property owners in the downtown know what the ordinances are and what codes they have to meet. And then also roofs are not eligible if it's just a repair. It has to be a complete redo of the roof, just be, and it has to show that there is a true public safety and health issue. So what they like to see is more of the exterior facade improvements, so tuck pointing, repair of, or replacement of windows and doors if there's damage to cornices or things like that. You know, it's more of the exterior. If there's any sort of ADA, you know, if there's a step that goes into the storefront, that can be covered through the commercial rehabilitation. Sidewalks can be eligible, but it would have to be a separate code or funding category. So if the, the city council would like to see a combination of both commercial rehabilitation and sidewalks, that can be done, infrastructure, but then a percentage of that match would have to come from the city rather than the business owner.
Okay, thank you. And we have, we have like three people that have applied, as you said.
Currently, I've got just a couple of pre-applications. Anybody who's looking for the pre-application information is available on our website. Pretty easy to sort through. You can find that, and pre-application, I think, is one page, and it's really about half a page.
Yeah.
It's name, what you would like to do. There's nothing that binds you to actually proceed with the project or with the dollar amount that you'll write down, so.
Right.
Michael would have been here tonight, but he's had some other problems. Yep, but I checked with him, and he said that eight people had, eight businesses had called him in the last couple of days. So he said it's really picking up the interest in it, so hopefully we'll get a few here.
Perfect, perfect. The other thing I want to mention that I forgot about is property owners are eligible to apply for downtown revitalization as long as they have a for-profit business in the building currently, or it is going to be occupied within the time of the grant. The downtown revitalization program will not cover speculative projects.
In the first part of your presentation, you said, "Come forward and support this."
Yeah.
What does that look like from us?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, you know, approval of, of the resolution is kind of your, your standard support of the project, you know, that the city council sees value. But if any of you are business owners, or just, you know, you're in support of the program, you are more than welcome to give Tobias and Aaron a letter of support separately if you wanted to do that as an individual rather than from the council itself. We can submit the maximum of five letters of support, but I always encourage the communities that I work with to get more than five. And then what I do is I take the quotes that are in the letters of support, and I build them into the narratives. And they are really trying to strengthen the citizen participation within these Community Development Block Grant applications to show that there is support and there is that need within the community, and the community is backing the city with their efforts to revitalize the downtown. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I guess, I, when you said that, I didn't know if there was, you know, we were sending Tobias someplace to testify, or somebody to, to do, but as you started to speak about it, I wondered if we could have some collectively, some letter, but you're looking for, you're looking for somebody out of the public space.
Right.
To make those.
Absolutely, yeah, that your business, your, it's really your, your business owners, you know, there's, there's three different sections within the support, business support, resident support, and visitor impact, but.
Yeah, Michael, like Terry said, Michael is not a town for a funeral, but I'm sure reaching out to him.
Oh, absolutely.
That won't be a problem.
We're on top of it. We're on top of it.
Yeah, okay.
Tobias?
I just didn't know what it looked like, Terry.
Tobias, she stated that they, those applicants, when we get an applicant, do we check when we're going to award it to them, do we check to make sure that they have met all the code ordinances or anything?
In the past, when we've gotten, so again, we're talking pre-applications, assuming we get the grant, then we'll work through those pre-applications to see who's still interested, and we'll have, usually, we have a committee the last couple of times that they review them. But no, we did not go and inspect the building with those pre-applications before with applicants. We've, we've not done that in the past.
Okay. Anyone from the public?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:17 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? And that passes eight to zero. One more public hearing we have for tonight, the public hearing for the purpose of considering the acquisition of real property from Jeff Sailors and Susan Jane Sailors, Mark R. Kilman and Heather Kilman, Eric Schroder and Amy Jo Schroder, described as follows. Lot 10, Block 2, Timon Subdivision, Beatrice Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 1902 Lincoln Street.
Yes, we provided the opportunity to purchase this house at 1902 Lincoln Street. The people who lived there have passed away. The six names you see there are their children and their spouses. They approached the city, asked if we'd be interested in purchasing their particular house. What we have before you is a contract with a sale price of $160,000. Closing date's November 1st, and gives them an opportunity to kind of close everything up with the estate. As they, the children live in about three different states, and so they're trying to handle things kind of long distance. Other than that, any questions? We don't have a plan for the property once we're done at this point. Once we have an opportunity to acquire it, we'll go in and inspect it, see if there's something there that we think that we can continue to do with that house, whether that's renting it out, whether it's selling the house itself, having it moved. We'll look at those opportunities at that point. We just have not had an opportunity to inspect the house yet, so.
Any discussion? From the council? From the public?
Do I have to come up there?
Yes. Say your name, address.
Kate Radigan, 730-5160725 Avenue, Sterling, Nebraska. I didn't come here to talk about this tonight, but I'm just curious, when did the city get into the business of buying people's houses and not knowing what you're doing with them? What is, what is the purpose of that? It doesn't seem like the city's mandate. I'm just, I mean, I'm asking, you know, if you know, tell me.
That particular property sits on a corner that at some point in time, when the elementaries are gone, we're going to have to look at what we do for traffic patterns.
Are you buying it for the roundabout? Is that what you're thinking about?
There is no planned roundabout at this time.
Well, if you don't have any plan for it, just as a citizen, Beatrice, I'd say we shouldn't be buying any property that we don't have a plan. If we do have a plan, we should tell people what the plan is so that they, they can know about it. And set up, because I don't think we want to just be buying random houses and not have a plan for them. We shouldn't be buying houses and renting them out in the city, and that's just my opinion. I just want to share that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Seeing none.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:20 PM.
Second.
Gentlemen, any further discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7111, to apply for federal assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program for the Purpose of Replacing the Playgrounds Set Located at Saratoga Astro Park with a New ADA Compliant Playground Set.
I move the resolution number 7111 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Gentlemen, any further discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7112, executing the application and any other documents necessary for, necessary for the Nebraska Department of Economic Development Community Development Block Grant for an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. Whoops.
No, it should be a downtown rehabilitation.
I was going to say, all right. I'll start over. Resolution number 7112, executing the application and any other documents necessary for the Nebraska Department of Economic Development Community Development Block Grant for a downtown revitalization rehabilitation program within the city.
I move the resolution 7112 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion? Any further discussion? Other than we'd like to see more pre-applications come in. All right. Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7113, executing the purchase agreement and any and all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Jeff Sailors and Susan Jane Sailors, Mark R. Kilman and Heather Kilman, and Eric Schroder and Amy Jo Schroder.
I move that resolution number 7113 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Gentlemen, any more discussion needed? Your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. Okay, resolution number 7114, entering into an appraisal engagement agreement between the city and Home and Country LLC to provide appraisal services for 1902 Lincoln Street.
I move the resolution number 7114 be passed and adopted.
Second.
All right, discussion.
State law requires anytime you purchase property over $100,000, you have to have an appraisal done. We went out, got some quotes, and city, home, and county, or country was the low quote that we received back. I think it's $550, and they'll have the appraisal done for us before closing.
Seeing no discussion. Your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. All right. Item E, resolution number 7115, approving the construction contract award for project number 007 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CB, CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project Number 21HO36035.
I move the resolution number 7115 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is another one of those projects as part of our owner-occupied rehab grants. We're not allowed to know who the applicant is, we're not allowed to know what the address is. SEND has looked at the applications, and they're recommending that we approve this particular application. The low bid that you saw in there, they're not recommending we go with the low bid because the low bid did not encompass the preferred items that were necessary to fulfill the house quality standards, and so that's why they went with the other bidder. Again, grants for $24,999.
Any discussion? All right. Your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7116, approving the construction contract award for project number 014 in the amount of $24,950 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project Number 21HO36035.
I move the resolution number 7116 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Same grant that we had before. This one, though, again, you'll notice that SEND is not recommending that the low bid be selected on this particular one. The homeowner highly recommend the work be done through, is it Rover Construction of Beatrice? And so they would like to stay with the local contractor here rather than selecting somebody out of Lincoln. The difference was fairly minimal, and that's what the homeowner would prefer to go with. So that's what they're recommending.
Discussion? Your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7117, approving the construction contract award for project number, project number 018 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project 21HO36035.
I move the resolution number 7117 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Similar, again, the only thing I would, once again, note is that the city doesn't have any money in these projects. This is all grant-funded, and so if anything over $25,000, the property owner picks up. That's why you see all these grants come in at $24,999.
Discussion? Your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7118, adopting an access management policy, setting forth objectives and parameters for access between the public right-of-way and private developments.
I move the resolution number 7118 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So this and an ordinance that we have kind of later have to deal with kind of where driveway standards are at in town, but access management policy is one that we had drafted by JEO a while back here, maybe a year ago or so, and we want to officially adopt it before you, basically, again, what it talks about is where driveways are located, how are they designed, how far away from curbs or some corners should you be, how close they should be to other driveways. All that stuff is way, what's laid out in the access management policy that we've been putting into practice here for the last several years.
Discussion? Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Resolution number seven.
I'm going to recommend we postpone taking action on this.
Okay, we will postpone taking action, action on resolution number 7119 for tonight.
And the reason, we're still, we got the contracts this weekend, and so we had a chance to kind of review it. We have some questions still in it, and rather than rushing it through, I'd rather take an opportunity to sit back, make sure we're clear on exactly what the contract says and how it works, and so before we move forward on that project, since it's not time-sensitive.
If it's on the agenda, do we need to pull it off and table it, or can you just pull it off?
No, we just won't, yeah, we just take no action on it, and.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't.
Nope.
On our own terms.
Okay, move on to ordinances. Ordinance to repeal sections 2447 through 2470, inclusive of the Beatrice City Code Regarding Occupation Taxes.
I move this said ordinance to be given number 23-22. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
The suspension of rules is not debatable, so gentleman, your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. Okay, introduce an ordinance repeal sections 2447 through 2470, inclusive of the Beatrice City Code, by number the first time, by number the second time, and by number the third time.
I move that said ordinance number 23-22 be passed and approved.
Second.
Discussion?
So as Councilman Varner indicated earlier, what we have in the city code are a number of kind of old occupation taxes that have been around at least since the 70s. If you. If you look, you can see they're all codified in 1971. Well, that's when we re-codified everything. So my guess is they're in the old book. They simply got carried over. But we had stuff in there that, again, if you had a pool table or billiard table, you had to pay $15 per year. If you made bread or pastries and you sold out of your vehicle, you had to pay something, you know, another tax. We went back and looked. I think we collected a grand total of less than $2,000 on all of these over the last several years. Each year, we collect about $2,000 bucks. We spend more in administration time tracking them down. We weren't real good at following up. We didn't go out and try to see if new people were selling baked goods by other vehicles. If you had one the year before, we sent you a letter saying, remember, you gotta pay your license. So we'd recommend that you repeal all of these.
The best one was the spiritualist palm reader witch.
Well, and then you don't have to pay your $15 to be a rope walker anymore.
That's right.
Everybody's gotta have a hobby.
That's right.
Seeing no other discussion? Gentlemen, your vote please. That passes eight to zero. All right. Next ordinance, adding Article eight and Section twenty-three dash two oh one through twenty-three two two three, inclusive to Chapter twenty-three of the Beatrice City Code regarding driveways, approaches, and curbs. Again.
I move this said ordinance be given number twenty-three dash twenty-three. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
So the rule is not debatable. They have no actions taken tonight. It'll be read by only one time tonight. Your vote please. And that's passed eight to zero. Ordinance number twenty-three twenty-three, by number only the first time, twenty-three twenty-three the second time, and twenty-three twenty-three the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-three be passed and approved.
Second.
So what we have here are driveway standards. What we're working on, the engineering department, is to slowly introduce standards. So when somebody wants to come in and put a driveway in or a sidewalk, something like that, we have a set of rules that we can hand them so they know what we want them to make sure we follow. The first one James got done is the driveway standards you have here. They've kind of been put in practice, if you will, for a little while now, so we'd like to actually codify them. But it lays out in there how you come in and get an encroachment permit. We've had an encroachment permit for years. That's nothing new. It's a $5 permit, so it's not cost prohibitive. We just want to make sure that where you're at in our right-of-way. It talks about when a permit's not required. It talks about if there, if you have something that's a little different, how you ask for a deviation or an appeal, and then how that appeal process kind of works. That's all laid out here. The permit's good for 180 days, so you have plenty of time to work on those. If you have ones on the state highway, it talks about how you have to go and get the state's approval before you come talk to us, because then we're gonna make sure the state gets approved it. So that's kind of what's laid out in this particular section of code that we're looking to implement. Any questions anybody has?
Seeing no discussion. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. Your vote please. And that passes eight to zero. Okay, we're down to item six, public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Okay.
Kate Ratigan, seven three zero five one six oh seven two five, Avon, Australia, Nebraska. I wanted to talk to you tonight about the letter that I received this last Monday from city saying that they're going to close Court Street for six weeks, month and a half, from the middle of September till the end of October. I have not had a chance to talk to everybody downtown, but I've talked to a lot of business owners, and they're all very concerned about this. People that are in retail, tourism, hospitality are gonna be seriously infected by this. I would like to point out that there is a time constraint for the contractor to get this job done. And I know that you guys are saying that if we don't do it this way, that it'll be going into the holiday season, which actually doesn't really start until the end of November, around Thanksgiving. But being closed for six weeks is not a small thing for a business. You're basically not gonna get people to walk that far. They're just gonna go somewhere else. And I think it's gonna be really, really damaging to all the businesses downtown that, not the office building, and not the insurance office, but people that rely on people coming in to spend money. And I don't understand why we're closing between Second and Fourth, and Fourth Street has already been completely done north to south. So they're gonna start, I would assume, on the east side of Fourth Street. So from Second Street to Fourth Street, there's a public parking lot on the north side between Third and Fourth. There's a part of it of street parking there, and it would allow people to come down to Fourth and then turn north or south to get out of the downtown. I understand that you're worried about trucks making that turn and all that stuff, but couldn't you have the official detour, be Second Street down to Market, and then say, you know, open to Fourth Street for local access to the downtown public parking? Rather than, you're not even working on between Second and Fourth. They're not even doing any work there. So why are we closing that part of it off? Also, we understood from all the stuff, and I have all the contracts and paperwork from everything that the city communicated with and all the emails, that there was gonna be like a couple of days or maybe a week where our block would be closed. There was never any discussion about six weeks, a month and a half, of being closed. In fact, this is the first that I heard of it. And I just get a letter, I don't know whose decision this was, but the city council, I don't think was even aware of it when the letter went out, because the city council people I talked to did not know about the letter. So I think this isn't, I think this is a really bad idea, and I don't understand why there's such a tone deafness to how these decisions affect the people downtown. You can't just expect somebody to have no access to the public, to their business, for a month and a half. If the contractor is behind, there's a provision in the contract that says they have $1,000 a day damages. Are we protecting the contractor? And at the expense of the downtown businesses? I don't understand why it's being done like this. Holding it over our head that it'll be like through the holiday season, well, they're supposed to be done by the 30th of October, according to the schedule that I have here, based on their start date of March 14th, which is when they did start. So if they're not gonna be done by October 30th unless we close it, close the downtown down for six weeks, then that means that they're not on schedule. So why are we punishing the businesses downtown instead of the contractor, according to the contract that we have? That's my question. I think they really need to think about that and make some changes so that people can access the downtown at least up to Fourth Street, and then from the other end, Seventh Street, so that, and keep those north and south roads open, so that we don't have such, so much damage to people. It's damaging businesses that aren't even having the work done in front of them. Leave Second to Fourth open, leave Fourth and, you know, Third open so that people can go north and south and get in and out of the downtown area and use that public parking lot, I would request.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for the public forum? Come on up, state your name and address.
Nathan Cook, 1913 Elk Street. Member of Beatrice Fire Department for the last 21 years. Some of you probably wondering why we're here tonight. A group of us decided to come to show support for our department, for its members and our community. For those of you that probably know, the union officers sat down, the local 1098, sat down and had a, had a meeting with Mr. Templemyer about a month ago regarding the fear of losing several of our personnel to other departments. For those of you who may not be aware, there are larger departments out there, such as Lincoln Fire and Rescue, who are also hurting for personnel, and they're offering lateral transfers for people with experience from other departments. What that basically means is someone with X amount of experience at Beatrice Fire and Rescue, for instance, could apply and basically transfer over to their department at a higher pay rate than what an entry-level person would transfer over at. For instance, somebody with seven years of experience would transfer over to what seven years of experience would equal at Lincoln Fire and Rescue. And for those of you who are not aware, that's a difference of about $8 an hour for that, for that particular person.
Seniority go with that, Nate?
What's that?
Seniority go with that?
Uh, no, seniority does not transfer. It's just pay. So you wouldn't gain seniority over particular guys that, you know, are, you know, on that department. Another thing they do offer is with their retirement, is you can buy into their retirement. It's something they have never offered before until recently. So for the cost of $10,000, you can buy, you can buy a year of service, up to 10 years of service into, no, 15 years of service into their retirement plan. They only require 26 years of service to be fully vested into their pension. So somebody who had an extra $150,000, say, in their retirement, in their retirement now, could buy 15 years of service, and they would only have to go up to Lincoln, they would be making a considerable amount more money, and they could, they would only have to put in 11 years of service in order to be fully vested in a pension, and they could retire fully vested in their pension program. The reason we had the meeting with Tobias was, was we had gotten word that six or seven of our personnel had entered into the application process with Lincoln. And our fear is that if we lose six or seven of our people, that will cripple us. It will cripple our department. It will hinder our, the level of care that we can provide to our community. And that is what's ultimately most important to most of us that have spent a very long career at Beatrice Fire and Rescue, is the level of care that we provide to our community. I think that we're, as a department, we are very well, very well respected in this community, and we just want to continue to be a good, to be in that, you know, that level of respect in the public eye. In the last five, three to five years, we have lost eight to 10 people, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's close to 10 people to larger departments. Lincoln, Omaha, Kansas City. And it just, we've, we've spent the entire time, it takes, when a new guy starts in our department, it's a six-month probationary period. We go through six months of training with that person. And because we don't have a, a training officer. Because we don't have a training officer, somebody, we don't have a dedicated academy, because we're not a big enough department to do that. A lot of that training has to happen on shift by the guys that are on the shift with that person, the shift captain, and the members of that, and the members of that shift. So we spend six months training these guys, and then maybe a year or two later, they leave and go to another department, and another person comes in. We spend six months training, training that next guy. And one or two years later, he might go, he might go because he gets a better opportunity somewhere else. I've been on this department for 21 years, almost 21 years. Seen a lot of people come and go. We have been historically everyone's first job. I can't remember the last time we had somebody apply that would, that had five, maybe 10 years, maybe 10 years of service on another department and wanted to come to a smaller community to finish out their career. Why aren't we trying to go out and get some of those people? Why aren't we trying to cherry pick some of those people from other, from other departments? So, and I got asked the question, well, do you think somebody would want to come to, to Beatrice and, and, you know, after being five, 10 years on another department? I said, why not? Let's, if we can give them something, if we can give them some, give them a reason to come here, if we can, if we can, like, like I said, cherry pick them from another department. Somebody who, somebody who ran their butt off for 10 years on Lincoln Fire might want a little change of pace. Say, hey, I can go make a little less, I can go make a little less money, but the cost of living is better, the call volume is better, the department is smaller, you know, I wouldn't mind running, riding out the rest of my career in a smaller town. But the problem is, is that they can't afford to take that big pay cut. So I don't know if, you know, we're gonna continue to lose, we're gonna continue to gain more people, lose more people. The problem is, is that essentially right now, the problem is money. We are not, we are not making enough to keep our, to keep our current members, and we're not making enough to bring more people in from outside. The problem, the initial problem right now is not retention. It's also getting, it's also the future of our department and the future of the care of our community. We looked ahead, and in the next five years, we're gonna have four retirements. How are we gonna replace those people? You know? In the next five years, I will be, I will probably be the most senior person on our department with 25 years of service. And I don't even think that that's a good thing. I think we should have, I think we should have those people with 30 years of service, 35 years of service. I can remember a day when we had those people. And those people have either retired, or we haven't been able to keep them. So we came here tonight to show support for our department. We support our leaders, we support you guys as a council, and we definitely support our community. And we're just, we're, we're asking for your help. I know you guys are aware, are aware of our problem, and we just wanted to let you know that we, we support what you're doing, but that we, we expressed urgency when we initially sat down and had the meeting. That was a month ago. The application period for Lincoln is coming to a close. And if we don't have something to tell those guys, they're gonna leave. And they ain't gonna be the last ones. This is, this is the first time that Lincoln's really pushed a lateral transfer. If it works for them this time, it's gonna work again the next time, and more guys will jump ship. Other departments will get on board and offer lateral transfer. We, we received a, all of us got a brochure in the mail for Bennington Fire Department that is building a fire, building a department, you know? And they're a newer department. They run about half as many calls as we are, and their starting pay for paramedics is about $5,000, about $3,000 less than what our top paramedics make. I mean, as a paramedic, how is that not enticing for me, you know, to want to go somewhere else? Me, I'm invested in this community, and I want to see this community thrive, I want to see this department thrive. This is where my family's at. I'm not going anywhere. But I want to keep these people that come to, that come to our community. I want to keep our department. I want to train these guys and keep them around and build our department to where we have the experienced personnel, to where we're not training new guys every two, three years and just kicking them out the door. So I guess we just, we came here tonight just to show our support for you guys, show our support for the community, and just ask for your support in return. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
Anyone else for public forum tonight? If not, we'll move on to discussion reports. Sanitation Department and landfill overview.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening, gentlemen. Quick introductions. Carrie McGrury and Tracy, and I'm gonna butcher it, and I have since day one. Zavaroski. So we're gonna, that's a tough one you gotta get used to. So I brought up the two ladies that work the closest with me, Carrie with Mars, and Tracy Willgoover with Boswa. They're the two that really make things, or I guess make my job a lot easier. So we'll kind of show a little bit as we go along here, but start off Midwest Area Refuge Solutions. We started collecting in April of 2021. We've got 12 full-time employees. We've got 11 pictured here. We hired our 12th employee today back onto the, onto the route. We have one part-time employee that works 29 hours a week doing recycling for us. Again, Mars was created in 2021 to provide municipal solid waste collection. Since then, we have grown by quite a bit. Since then, we have grown by quite a bit. Mars provides service to seven cities and villages, including Beatrice, Pickrell, Philly, Plymouth, Dakin, Western and Tobias. We provide porch side pickup for a hundred and seventy-five residential customers. The numbers, if you want to go over some just quick numbers for us to kind of show where we've, where we've came from.
As far as residential customers, we have, our total number is four hundred and fifteen. We've increased by two twenty-nine since April of twenty-one. And that for a total of twenty-eight months. We have residential customers about three hundred and fifteen and forty-seven commercial recycling customers. We also have this year about one hundred and thirty-two yard waste customers in, in Beatrice.
Yes, so we've, over the last twenty-eight months, uh, by increasing by two hundred and twenty-nine customers, that's rural customers, at twenty-three dollars per month on our rural customers. So we've, we've had, we've been able to expand our reach um in all directions for us, really we have. We have got, and I'll go over some of the numbers as we go along, automated side loaders that we have currently. Our automated side loaders are our ASLs. We currently use those in the villages of Philly, Pickrell and Plymouth. Again, they're the ones that we have around in the city of Beatrice. On Mondays, uh, my gentleman will run over to, uh, he'll run over to Philly. He'll pick up Tuesday. He's got Pickrell and, and Thursday he's got Plymouth. He'll run over to pick that up, come back and work in Beatrice. So this, the nice thing about the ASLs is it is one operator and it is safer for the operators. It's quieter in the neighborhoods and from what we've heard, uh, the residential's, uh, a lot of people's really like the fact that it's, it is just that, it's, it's quieter. And it is faster. Commercial collection routes. Mars uses two rear loaders. Uh, again, those are the ones that we go around in town and pick up, uh, commercial dumpsters in town. Each day, uh, we have two routes through Beatrice, Monday through Friday. They will pick up between eighty and a hundred and ten locations. Those are the dumpsters that you see behind your business, at the dealership, in the alley at the restaurant. They'll have between eighty and a hundred and ten that these guys will jump off and grab dumpsters for. And then they will run out to the dumps, run out to the, the landfill. They also go outside of town such as the truck stop north of town. Uh, they, they stay fairly close. Coke, uh, they'll run out and they'll pick up the dumpsters out there, but they stay relatively close to town for us.
Eighty to a hundred? You don't have a set number each week?
That's an average. I'm just saying, my average is about ninety.
I just thought, I know it's not, it's not citywide. It's just, I'm just wondering if you have some people that are just on call with it and need you?
Every.
So that would be the average per, between Monday and Friday. So they, each day varies. So one day it could be, oh, seventy, you know, around eighty, seventy-five, eighty for one commercial truck. And then the next day they might pick up a hundred and ten. So that's where that comes from.
And on Thursday, one truck picks up a hundred and forty stops.
Gotcha.
So at the end of the day, those guys are really running.
I gotcha.
Wednesdays, we also have cardboard routes. So when they're done doing their, their, their commercial dumpsters, they'll also go and pick up cardboard at the, the businesses that we have in town that, that have commercial cardboard pickup. Again, rural routes, Mars rural customers are ever growing that we currently, our footprint as previous mayor, he used to call it our footprint for the landfill, uh, was always kind of a smaller area and we were always confined to just right here around Beatrice. Currently, our footprint is from west of Crab Orchard, north of Philly, west of Tobias, and south to Steel City on Highway eight is where we have pickups at right now. So we are, we are north of, of Crab Orchard, all the way up around Firth into the HOAs right now. We're also all the way across. We, we circled DeWitt. We go around the southeast corner of Wilbur. We circle Swanton. We are around Tobias right now also and, and down. So on our Friday route, that truck will come out of Beatrice. It will pick up its first location, uh, south and east, about three miles in an HOA of Firth. Its last stop will be south of, south, well, closer to Swanton, will be the last stop. It will go all the way along Apple Road, along the north part of the county, all the way around Wilbur and south, and then circle back in. At the end of the day, he comes back in and he's got less than a fourth of a tank of fuel. And he's full when he goes and heads out in the morning. So, uh, we cover a lot of ground on a Friday.
Hey Jason?
Yes sir.
On, on these rural routes, um, you know, I know you're putting in a lot of miles and a lot of fuel, things like this, but, you know, and I know, you know, that, that a lot of these places right now, you know, we're trying to get the wage because of contracts and stuff like this, but are we being profitable?
Oh yes. Oh yes. Garbage is, garbage is extremely fruitful. This year, if you look at, uh, if you look at the budget numbers that you guys have seen, I believe if I remember right, this year we are gonna, this year we've purchased one hundred and ninety thousand dollar truck on a loan. We purchased forty-five thousand dollars worth of new totes that we paid for. And we also bought a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar truck that we paid for. We stand to finish the year roughly about three hundred thousand dollars to the positive side. Next year, I believe we've got another truck, uh, budgeted for. And we may have an employee in there also budgeted for a couple of other villages that we've got in the works right now. We still, next year we should end roughly seventy-five thousand higher than this year and possibly closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-five on the positive side. And that's with us budgeting trucks and possible employees along the way. So garbage, garbage is, there's money in garbage. And so with what we have right here, uh, this is our little red truck that we have. This was a truck that I was able to purchase off of our federal surplus. Uh, we were able to pull the backend off of it because the HOAs up in, uh, Firth area, they have thinner roads. Sometimes they have asphalt roads. They don't like seeing the bigger trucks come down into their HOAs. So by, by us getting this little truck on a Friday, I will send this truck up into the Firth area and it will run down all of these little HOAs. And, and people see it. They see our number on the side of it. They call us and they like it.
So an HOA, in case you don't know, is a homeowners association?
Yes sir.
Do we have to dump that truck during the day?
Uh, we do. This one here will pick up about twenty-five homes before it's full. It's got a tarp right here that will pull back over the top of it. Uh, there's a hinge and it's hydraulic. So what, what we'll do is we, we'll find the rear loader that's in that area. We generally try and keep them somewhat close. He'll back right up to the bumpers. He can dump right into the back of the truck. The truck will pull it in and pack it in the truck and then he'll take off and he'll head back and he'll pick up the next twenty-five homes. And, and we've got it so that every day of the week, except for Wednesday, which is our Dakin Western route, every day of the week, that little truck can go out and it has its own route where it'll go out and pick up twenty-five to forty homes. So it's quicker and I can put one gentleman on it and he doesn't need to have a CBL. And so recycling, uh, we've got our recycling containers that we've purchased this last year. We had a, a load of them come in with our Mars totes. Uh, this is, uh, the construction, the area that we had constructed for our Mars recycling and, and drop-off facility. Uh, we have our cardboard residential cardboard only right here and so on. We have our two recycling trailers that what you'll see. Uh, my employees will go down there every morning between six-thirty and probably nine when they pull both trailers. They'll bring them back up. The forklift will come in. This is a container that's been picked up off of the trailer. Uh, the forklift has a, what's called a rotator on it, so it can pick up a tote, rotate it upside down, dump the material out of the tote, set it back on the container, on the trailer, and it will go back down. We'll park it in place.
And they're full by two.
What's that?
And they're full by two.
And they are full by two.
Yep.
And, and so these boxes here are all called Gaylord's. And they will all be filled through this area and then the other area back over here is probably another thirty feet. This area will be all filled with Gaylord's. Every Thursday, we have a truck come out of Lincoln from First Star Recycling. We load the truck every Thursday and again, the next Thursday will come around. They'll pick the trailer up, drop off an empty one for us. Uh, this is just one day of cardboard out of our containers here is what gets dumped on the floor. Again, this is zoomed in a little bit, but our baler is back over in this corner here. And it will come clear into here and back into this room here. So we will get roughly two to three bales a day baled. And they run about twelve hundred pounds.
Do we sell that?
We do. Yeah, we do. Right now, I shop it around. We were selling it to Lincoln. The price was, was tanking. Uh, I shopped it around, found another company, Quincy out of Illinois. Now they come up, they pick it up and they truck it to, uh, Oklahoma for me. So it's something that when the prices do go down, they're, just because it's lower here doesn't mean I can't find ten dollars a ton somewhere else. That would have been the end of the Mars. Oh, wait a minute, this one here. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Weekly yard waste. So this is on Wednesdays, we have a, Wednesdays, we have a yard waste route that we pick up. Uh, what were we, a hundred and thirty-two yard waste? A hundred and thirty-two locations on a Wednesday. Uh, I will have two employees run around on a Wednesday morning. They'll dump this into a rear loader. Uh, you'll see the material out, out in the corner. They'll take it. They'll dump it down at the recycling compost site. And this is sludge that has been treated from the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, they will bring out roughly a truck a day. They'll dump it on the ground. We will mix grass, leaf and other yard debris with it. Uh, we will also mix in wood chips that we, we get brought in from contractors. Uh, this is more or less a raw pile that has not been cooking very long. Uh, this is a picture, we'll see this further on once we get into the Mars, or pardon me, the Boswa show. But this is what's called our bear. It turns the material. And so the material gets turned over. This, you can see, once it's been cooked, it's a little darker. So again, we pick up, Mars picks up the material, brings it in and, and we cook it into our compost that we sell at the compost site. Okay, uh, Mars, again, uh, our villages are between eighteen and twenty-three dollars on our villages. Uh, we have had increases on our villages, uh, each of the last two years, uh, getting our villages closer to what we are currently at twenty. Uh, again, we do have villages at twenty-three dollars though. Uh, we have, we are in talks with other villages uh, along the northern part of the county as well as some in the southeast corner, closer to that Steel City area to make that, the locations we have down there. Uh, it doesn't make sense for us to pick up here and run ten miles and pick up three people. Uh, but if we do find three people, then we, we work our way backwards and we try and find something to fill in the gap. Uh, currently, right now, if you were to look at the, the area that we have, uh, my plan has been to work my way across the northern half of the county. By doing so, we wall off Gage County and Saline County. Work our way back south. We make it harder for anybody else north of us to come into Gage County. Because the further south we go, the more rural customers we pick up, the harder it is for them to pick up and run ten miles before they might get to their first customer. Uh, before long, it isn't going to be, it's just not going to be, uh, cost efficient for them to do so. And, and the more dominoes will fall for us. Uh, we are, right now, we're in an area with Mars where in the last, ooh, probably ten days, we've ran fifteen totes into the village of Tobias and three or four dumpsters into the village of Tobias. We were on our Dakin Western route. We were a half a mile outside of Tobias. And word of mouth, they seen our totes. They called, um, the provider that they had was out of Hebron and he dropped them. Once we put three totes in town, he dropped them. Everybody in sta- in town just started calling us. So we were a half mile away. We've picked up, since we've picked up about forty customers at twenty-three dollars in just in Tobias for being a half a mile away. So that was an extremely good pickup for us for being just a half a mile away.
So Jason, um, it's my understanding where there's a discrepancy between what people Beatrice are paying and some other community that we're dealing with. We're trying to minimize that, right?
Yes, every year we've had an increase.
Yep.
Each of the last two years. This, this next March, I believe, May, 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 I believe May, we'll have another increase. But we keep them, we keep them manageable. We try to keep our villages happy. Uh, obviously, we're making, we're making money. Uh, we're doing so, we're able to purchase new equipment every year and we're able to keep the villages happy. And we're also able to slowly increase them and get them up to where we, where we want them in.
I just think it's important that people know that.
Yes sir. Yep. Yes sir. Yes sir. And, and with us, uh, Carrie, Carrie handles our billing and our customer service. Whenever they have, whenever they have a complaint, if so, they call in, they get Carrie, the number's on the tote. Uh, one of the big things that I hear the most is, is how, how good of a job that we do with our customer service. Uh, I, I can't compliment Carrie enough on the work that she does handling the, the customers who are unhappy or handling the new, uh, new customers that come in. Every day she makes up a work order. Uh, we discuss things in the morning. Every morning we'll discuss things quickly about what we're looking at and then every time, every day, generally near the end of the day, we'll have a quick meeting. Just, hey, is there anything new that's popped up that I need to know about for tomorrow? So, uh, I would say Mars is something that, uh, is definitely a bright spot for the city of Beatrice and we are only going to grow and grow. Yeah, uh, jumping right straight into Beatrice Area Solid Waste Agency, Boswa. And so again, Boswa has been in, let's see, first off, we have five employees with Boswa and with me is Tracy. Uh, Tracy's been with the city of Beatrice for thirty-five years. Uh, she switched out to Boswa probably three years ago, about three years ago. I thank the day that it happened and, and I, I smile at Tobias every single time I tell him that I'm glad she left going and came to me. So, uh, what Tracy has done for the landfill is, is monumental. She is, the landfill was a bunch of guys that ran it and she was able to make it a warm and welcoming place if you can, uh, just because, just because some people call a landfill a dump, it doesn't have to be a dump. A landfill can be clean and welcoming and, and that's something that I really strive for with what we have out there. So, uh, again, I, I thank Tracy because she is what keeps my paperwork documents, uh, in line so that when the state shows up, all I have to do is ask where something's at and it's there. So, but we do have five employees, a landfill foreman with Jared and, uh, it works out really well. Uh, Boswa is, uh, very unique because it does have different types of landfills on the same site. A pre-subtitle D is what we have, is our old landfill. Uh, when you hear somebody say the old landfill that is a pre-subtitle D, that is anything that is prior to nineteen ninety-four, I believe, uh, that is a clay liner. That was no, uh, high-density polyethylene, which is what they use now. Uh, it was just a clay liner, a big bowl that they would dig out lined with clay and start filling. And so, uh, that old landfill, old landfill that we have is monitored with gas wells and the state comes down quarterly, uh, quarterly for us. And checks our water wells. We also have our new landfill. Uh, the new landfill is, is from nineteen ninety-four and on. And we also have, uh, that was designed with HDPE, which again is the high-density polyethylene liners. Boswa's regulated under five permits. Our construction and demolition site, our MRF, which is Material Recovery Facility, which is our baling facility when we used to have it, the building, um, is what that is, a permit for the building, the permit for the landfill, the permit for the compost site and the permit for the C and D, the construction and demolition site across the road. So we have five permits that we have to keep in order. Boswa sits on a hundred and eighty-six acres. Uh, sometimes people don't just realize just how big the landfill is and what we have up there. But, uh, again, the landfill brings in roughly thirty-one thousand tons of municipal solid waste each year. Uh, we have increased those numbers over the last about six years, six or seven years. We were at about twenty thousand tons. We're a little over thirty-one thousand tons. Again, the material comes in every day. Yeah, this is a D-six dozer. It will push material into place. And our compactor will come and compact the material, uh, and get our densities where we need them to be so that we save airspace. Landfills sell air. Uh, the more air we can, that we can keep, the more garbage we can put in, the more money we can make before we have to move. Uh, this is Seneca here. He is coming in with a, with a fifty-two foot walking floor that he comes in and brings in garbage. Generally twice a day, sometimes once, but generally twice a day he'll come in. Again, our compactor will compact garbage down to twelve hundred pounds per cubic yard with our compactor is what we try to get. Our compactor will tell us it has a gauge, uh, pardon me, it has a monitor in the dash and it'll tell us. Uh, the colors will change when our densities are right. Construction and demolition site, uh, this last year we brought in roughly fifteen thousand tons of construction material. Construction materials, anything, what's that?
Roofs.
Yeah. Well, uh, it is, it is. And, and so we've had, but the years before that, we had elevators that came in. So the last couple, three years, we've had really, really good years. Ever since that co-op elevator on the east side of dumpsters came in, we've had really good years. But yes, yes, last year, we were hammered roofs.
So when you get to a certain point and you're, you've limited the height of this and you're seeing the landfill.
Yes sir.
So you, at the end of this, lifespan of this, do you seal this as well in, in case that?
Yes. Yes. Yes, this is, there is no H D P E liner underneath this. This is clay.
Right.
Uh, because this is not M S W, this is construction debris. Uh, this is the second, this is the first lift here. This is the second lift. Uh, I do have drone footage at the end of this that will fly over and will give you a really good picture of what we're looking at, and it will show you the different lifts on the construction and demolition site.
But you don't have to pack this at the same rate?
Uh, not at the same rate, no. You wanna pack it, but you don't have to pack it at the same rate, because generally, this machine here, this is a seven-fifty-five K, uh, and, and, and it is a roughly a, a smaller version of a, a nine-sixty-three Caterpillar dozer. Uh, it will just pack everything and pack and, and tight and keep it in shape. We do wanna shape it like a pyramid, so our, our, our slopes are at a, at a four-to-one slope, and then we will build up roughly seventy feet high in one cell before we move to the next cell. We have, I believe, six cells. We're in, uh, we're in cell one on our landfill, our construction demolition site. Uh, this is a, what's called a slurry truck. In years past, this was, this was not brought into this, into the landfill. Uh, after talking with the state, the state, uh, had the great idea, why don't you guys dig what's called a slurry pit? We bring these truckloads in now. Anytime you have, uh, a, a vac truck that will have to do any sort of, uh, digging around utility lines, fiber optics, they have to have it with a, a jet truck. It creates a, a muddy slurry that they have to suck up. We take it, we dug a hole, we dump it in there, now we're bringing these trucks in at a hundred dollars a load. Uh, we will get these trucks all summer long, all day long. So it was a revenue stream that we've picked up. Again, this is our compost site, compost site that we have here. It's a Class A compost site. We are, uh, held to federal, uh, guidelines and testing, uh, quarterly testing on it. Our compost has to be turned every five days. We try to maintain a hundred-and-forty to a hundred-and-forty-five degree temperature. Uh, temperatures have to be taken in three different locations on the side of it, and we have quarterly samples that have to be sent in so that we can maintain our Class A compliance. Uh, because of the fact that we have sludge or treated fecal matter in this compost, we have to cook it in order to kill the, the, uh, E. coli and, and the salmonella, but E. coli is the big one that we're looking at. Uh, other levels are coliform that they'll look at, so, but the E. coli is the level that we want to have at a zero, so that we can sell it to the public and stay Class A compliant.
Or days like today, it'll cook itself, right?
It will. And honestly, on days like today is, are the days that you have to really maintain the temperature, because if you get too hot, you'll kill the microbes. If you get too cold, if we get too many days in a row of wet weather, uh, it will actually kill the microbes. And so you'll wanna make certain, it, there is, there is a science to it. If it's, if it's not hot enough, you don't kill the weed seed, you end up selling compost that has foxtail seed in it. If you turn it too soon, then that's when you get, you don't kill the grass seed, the weed seed. Uh, if you turn it too late, you kill the bugs and you end up having dead, uh, compost, and dead compost is, is nitrogen deficient. And so, again, you're, you're, all you're selling is just matter. So, uh, there is a science to it. Uh, this is the new landfill site. If you look at the map, this is the landfill area here. Cr- this is our C and D. This is eighty acres across from what we call the link. This goes from the booster station to Highway one-thirty, uh, Highway, uh, uh, one-thirty-six over here. This area here will be the new landfill that will have construction begin next year on this area right in here. So this is eighty acres. Our, our first cell will be in this general area right here.
And that's projected to ha- last how long, Jason?
I believe seventy-five years, give or take, at our current intake levels. Seventy-five years. And so, what's that?
How much time you have left in the old field, landfill?
Uh, we will be pushing, uh, they're telling me construction starts next year, that we should be able to move into it the summer of twenty-five. And so we have about, we have two small lifts, let's put it that way. We'll be nipping and tucking right there at twenty-five. Right, right there at twenty-five, and so. All right, we'll move over to our drone footage. Uh, it's something that I wanted to take and kinda show here as we go along. Uh, click it. Yep.
I'm trying to click it.
It's thinking. Boy, I really hope that goes, that's nice footage. There we go. All right, and so we'll kinda go over this quick.
There's something, maybe shot it at night.
Can I maximize that, Aaron, or not?
Should be able to.
Nope. Okay. All right, so it will speed up on it. As this here, we're looking down the road, you can kinda see, this is our, our C and D area over here. This field here is our new landfill over here. This is our compost area that we have right here. We're gonna pull into our landfill. We have Tracy's office and our main scale in here, our scale. Here you see Seneca Transfer is leaving the landfill, coming down one of our roads here. As the trucks come through, they'll come and they'll, they'll work their way back through here, and they'll circle back up this road here, and they'll go back up top. Uh, this is all landfill, what you see, the trees here is all landfill property back to these trees here. Uh, as you look back here, this is an old brush off, brush drop-off site that we have, but this is a stormwater pond. This road goes down to, it's dry, has been dry for a couple of years. Uh, we really do not have any stormwater runoff. This is our leachate pond. Our leachate pond is, leachate is any water that runs through garbage. Anything that runs down through the landfill cells, uh, there is a drainage system that has a filtration, uh, lines underneath of each cell. Water then runs down, ma- runs to a main sewer, sewer system and runs to our pond. This is the old landfill. Again, this is our pre-subtitle D landfill. You can see our slope here. Uh, we've got extremely nice grass cover on top of it, um, and you can see our cells. These here, I believe we zoom into this right in here, uh, right here, maybe she does. This is a gas well. These circle the top of our landfill. Uh, methane gas comes out of the top of these, and at the bottom of every landfill, uh, methane gas well, there is a groundwater well, or pardon me, there is a, uh, uh, a vent that I have to test quarterly to make certain that we don't have any methane leaving our footprint. Uh, I'll have to test it, make sure it stays at zero for us, and that's a quarterly test. Again, here, you're looking, this is Sumner Street, we're going down. You can see, this was one, this is one lift, this is two lifts, this is a third lift here that we're working on right now, that the guys are on, the top of the old landfill where the trucks will come back around and go down into. Uh, this area here is just an area that we've put some more material into that doesn't have vegetation established on it yet. But we will go around, we'll jump over, take a quick look at the compost site. It does speed up. Probably gonna stay in our cell here is what she's doing, yep. All right, so this here, we're flying into what's cell five. This is our western boundary. This is our eastern boundary. This is Sumner Street right here. Trucks will come down the road, they'll pull in. As these, as they'll come down in, you'll see the active face that the guys work on every single day. Uh, they are, right now, they have what's called their, their face, their active face that they're working on. Generally, these are about twenty yards wide. There's our, our, uh, eight-twenty-six K compactor, it's roughly ninety-two thousand pounds. The trucks will bring garbage in, they'll dump it right here. The dozers will push it into place, the compactor will then compact it into place, and then they cover it all up with, with dirt as they go along. This is cell five here. This is Sumner, again, this is Sumner over here. Uh, if you, if it comes up, you might be able to get a decent look at how much life we have left in this one cell before twenty-twenty-five. This lift right here that we're working on right now will probably be about March, I'm hoping, before we have it finished. And then we will have this grassy area on the right, if it pans right. And it doesn't, but we'll have roughly another fifteen feet on top of it before twenty-twenty-five. Uh, compost site, again, the trucks will come in. This is our mulch that Mars brings in, dumps off. This is where we let the material cook. This is our screener over here, will screen out compost to be able to sell to the public. This is material down here, the loader is grabbing it and trucking it back into place so that we can carry it from here down to here. We dump it down here. This is when it's getting ready to be tested. And these are windrows here. Uh, each windrow has a number on the front of it, first quarter, second, third, fourth, lets us know that the compost that we make this summer is compost that will be sold next summer or given away next summer. It will set through the winter. There's our compost there. Again, this is eighty acres for our compost area, or pardon me, C and D area. This is the gravel road that goes south of the link. It's what would be Sumner Street. Our lifts, this is one lift right here, we've been working on this lift for the last ten years. So we still have many years left here, uh, to go up. This is where we're taking dirt from. This is what cell two would be, this is what cell three would be, cell four and cell five would be over here. So again, we have roughly seventy to seventy-five years in our construction and demolition site. So trucks will come through, they'll either go up to our brush pile up top, our slurry pile up top, or, and this one here, this is a vac truck right here, bringing slurry in. He'll take it up to the slurry pit. Again, this is our borrow that we use for covering at the C and D as well as landfill. This is our brush pile, chips, brush. Uh, that pile right there does have all of the brush hauled into it from the storm that we had. Uh, no, it does not yet, does not yet. This was a little bit older before we brought it out. So, but that pile there is, is a little bigger. Again, the new landfill is this hillside over here was where we'll be. I'll have a contractor come out, he grinds for about seven-hundred dollars an hour, grinds brush for us. He'll grind all of that brush into wood chips. We use the wood chips at the landfill in our compost, as well as we are permitted, uh, fifty-fifty dirt and wood chip in the landfill for cover. So, again, this is a lift, this is one lift, this goes up, this is two lifts, and this is a third lift right here. Again, this is our new landfill across the way. These trees will stay there. This line that you see in the distance, this is cedar trees, that were two rows of cedars that were planted in two thousand and sixteen. Right now, they're currently about four feet tall. So that way, we've already, we are proactive in, in planting our perimeter fence. So, again, gentlemen, uh, the one thing I will say about Mar- uh, Boswa, it is large. Uh, it, uh, covers a lot of area, has a lot of moving parts out there from our compost sites, uh, M S W, C and D, uh, five permits, uh, so, um, things are always happening at Boswa. Any questions, gentlemen?
I feel the same way I did when we went through dumpsters. You know, unless you get involved with this, you really don't understand how much there is that's being done. You guys are doing a great job.
They are.
I noticed, did you clean that whole thing up before you did the aerial thing?
No.
No, I was just.
We, we take care of our landfill.
And actually, for the price that we pay, this, this is not bad. Our price is relatively cheap.
It is. We are forty-seven dollars a ton, uh, is what we are to bring into the landfill. If you have a roll-off, we're six dollars per cubic yard into the landfill, and we're ten dollars per ton to bring it into the C and D site for contractors to come into. Our, our brush coming in, whether you bring a pickup load in, uh, or, or an arm load that you bring in, it's still five dollars a truckload. Um, and so that helps us offset a little bit of the grinding by the end of the year, but, so, but, uh...
Yeah, when we purchased the ground on the south side there, we got a little blowback from the community, but we're, we're looking like a bunch of rock stars now.
Absolute rock star, because, uh, the conferences that I go along with, I was a board member for the state of Nebraska, um, uh, chapter for landfills and, and the, the problems that you see around the state when new landfills are built, uh, between people who live along the property, people who live on the road to the properties, the, the smell, uh, a- and, and they, they fight the permitting process of it. Uh, we're already there, the process, the permitting's already done. Everything, I mean, we're, we've got our sales out and we are headed directly for the new landfill.
Yeah, we caught a lot of hell over that, I remember that.
Jason, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you guys very much.
Good job, guys.
Yep, yep.
All right, we'll move on to city administrators' monthly report.
Yeah, just a couple of highlights that I wanna point out in there.